Welcome to Sitcom Showdown, a podcast that reviews classic sitcom episodes and inducts them into our very own Hall of Fame. As usual, one of us has chosen a sitcom episode and the other guy has no idea what it's gonna be. Will they already know it? Will they love it? Can they be convinced that it's worthy? Let's find out on Sitcom Showdown. Hello and welcome to Sitcom Showdown, episode 71. It's Jeff is here and Steve, you're on the Skype line.
Yes, I'm here listeners. Hello, how are you? How are you Jeff?
Yeah, no, I'm going alright, going alright.
Good, good.
Um, it's your choice this time around. Uh, I'm just gonna hand it straight over to you to tell us what you chose and what's going on.
Yes, so I am nominating an episode of What We Do in the Shadows for the Hall of Fame this fortnight. And it's an episode called City Council and it was episode two of season one. You familiar with this?
Oh, yes. Yep, yep, sure I am.
Uh, so I'll give the listeners a description of it which I've adapted from Wikipedia. So this is set in Staten Island, New York and it's a mockumentary following the lives of three traditional vampires. Nandor the Relentless, Laslo and Nadia. And Laslo and Nadia are married. Also sharing their house is Colin Robinson, who is an energy vampire, and Guilemo, Nandor's familiar. And the series revolves around the vampires adapting to the modern world with the help of Guilemo and occasionally Colin Robinson. So am I saying this guy's name right Jeff?
Uh, I think it's Guillermo.
Guillermo, alright.
Yeah. Just pretend you're Nandor when you're saying his name.
Yes, so as you might imagine, uh, for a sitcom which is riffing on vampire themes, this one's not one for the kiddies Jeff. And there's occasionally buckets of blood, obscured thingamajigs in orgies and swearing and whatnot.
Oh, yes.
Now, this is based on a 2014 film which might be familiar to some people, which was made in New Zealand. And written and directed by Jermaine Clement and is it Taika?
Uh, I thought it was Taika.
Whititi. And that movie was set in Wellington. Yes, they ma- the FX network made this sitcom in the US. And there's two seasons of it. The first one which um we're talking about was 2019. And they're making the or have made the second season, but it hasn't aired yet, so it's quite up to date. So some of the people who are in this show is Kay Van Novak as Nandor the Relentless. Uh, Nandor is a vampire who is 757 years old and was once a soldier of the Ottoman Empire. He regards himself as the leader of the group and not only can he transform into a, sorry?
Sorry, I was just laughing at Nandor considering himself the leader of the group.
He's fearsome though Jeff, he's fearsome. He can transform into a bat and he can also become a dog.
Oh, okay.
Which he did in one episode to save Laslo from an animal shelter.
Oh, that was hilarious, that was.
Yeah, 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 it was good. Uh, Kay Van is a British actor who's been working since about 2002, mostly in TV. And he's best known for co-creating and starring in the comedy series Phone Jacka from 2006 to 2008. For which he won the BAFTA Television Award for Best Comedy Program or Series in 2008. You're probably not familiar with that, that one Jeff. It's one of those shows where they ring people up and prank call them.
So it must have been a thin year in 2008.
Maybe, I'm not sure what it was up against or anything like that. Uh, he was also in an episode of The Quacks, of not The Quacks, of Quacks. Called The Mesmerist. Matt Berry is in this one. We were raving about him last fortnight. Uh, he stars as Laslo Cravensworth, an English nobleman vampire who was turned by Nadia and is now married to her. He frequently disagrees with Nandor's leadership, this is what you were hinting at, I think. And enjoys making music and tapery sculptures. He is also able to transform himself into a bat but must shout "bat".
Oh, and does that mean the others, uh, the others don't have to, but he does have to? Wow.
They don't have to apparently, yeah. So we talked about Matt a lot. Um, he was in Garth Maringi's Dark Place, which we covered in episode 23. House of Fools, which we covered in episode 44. IT Crowd, which we did in episode 45. And he was also in Toast of London and Euro of the Rabbit and other things. And he's a musician and famous voice actor. He's got a tremendous voice. Uh, the rounding out the three old school vampires, Natasha Dimitrio stars as Nadia, married to Laslo. However, she is secretly seeing a human man named Jeff Suckler, that's a bit of nominative determinism. Who is the reincarnation of her former human lover Gregor, whom she accidentally decapitated in her previous incarnation.
Oh, nice one.
And she can transform into a swarm of rats.
Oh.
That would be, could be handy. Uh, so Natasha is a English Cypriot comedian, actress and screenwriter. And her debut show, which was called You Never Have All of Me, won the Skinny Debutante Award at the 2014 Edinburgh Fringe Festival. Festival Fringe. Yes, so um, that's the, the main three. And then we've got Harvey Gillan as Guilemo. Nandor's, I said, he's a very patient, familiar. Uh, he has served Nandor, his master, for 10 years in order to become a vampire. And this character has a great plot twist at the end of season one. Uh, Harvey is an American actor and he played Steve the Demon in an episode of The Good Place.
Oh.
An episode called Everything is Bonza, Part One.
Right.
Yep. Uh, then we've got Mark Proch as Colin Robinson. Colin is an energy vampire who lives with the trio. Unlike regular vampires, he has no outward sign of vampirism, except that his pupils sometimes glow and his reflection shows a pale version of himself. He drains humans and vampires of their energy by boring or enraging them. I find this quite an amusing idea, what do you reckon?
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. He's also a daywalker, which means he can roam around in both day and night. The others are constantly annoyed by him and often try to avoid associating with him. But they let him stay in the house because his office job pays for their rent.
I wondered what the arrangement was. Oh, there you go.
Yes, yes. Mark is an American comedian and he's best known for acting in The Office. Uh, Better Call Saul and of course, What We Do in the Shadows. Are you, are you familiar with him?
Uh, no, no.
Uh, you never got into Better Call Saul?
No, no, or Breaking Bad or any of the stuff.
Or Breaking Bad, which that came from. No, okay, cool, cool. I was also gonna mention that in addition to Jermaine and Taika, Paul Sims is an executive producer of this show. Now, where do we know he from Jeff?
Oh, I did some research on this. Uh, yes, I thought the name was familiar and News Radio is from, which we love of course.
Yes, he put News Radio together.
Hmm.
So that's um, very exciting and he actually wrote this episode which we're gonna be talking about. Alright, well, um, we're gonna pretend that we're going off to go and watch this now and we'll come back shortly with the synopsis.
Cool.
Good evening, Madame Lazaro. My name is Laslo Cravensworth. And who do we have here?
Oh, I'm watching my little granddaughter for the night.
What a lovely little nibble she would be.
I'm sorry, do I know you?
Well, you do now. Now, I come to you with a warning. Those who you trust cannot be trusted. But I am here to help you with that.
Why don't you uh, call my office in the morning and I'll, I'll try to see if I can find someone who can help you with whatever it is you need help with.
It's not I who needs help, it's you. So it's me who's ending this conversation, not you. And you won't remember a thing about it. And you, my darling, won't remember a thing about a damn thing.
Well, that was interesting, wasn't it Steve?
Oh, very, very interesting. Now let me tell the listeners about it. And Jeff, you can chime in with comments as well.
Yeah.
So we opened the episode with Guilemo having sourced virgins for the three vampires. And he's done this by finding the local LARP group. And he's congratulated on, on his success in finding them by Nandor. Now Jeff, what's a LARP group? Are you familiar with LARPing?
Oh, I, I am, but only in a derisory way, if that's the right word. But yes, live action roleplay. So what we've got is we've got a group of college students pretending to be medieval types. Uh, they're live action roleplaying. So, yes, it's um.
Some kind of a fantasy.
Oh, I think, without wanting to displease anyone or put anyone in a box, I, I do think in some ways they deserve the, having the piss taken out of them that they get in this particular episode.
Okay.
No, it's just.
Uh, so we, as we're watching these LARPers, we discover that one of them, uh, she's called Jen Elf. But that's just because she's playing an elf in the, the LARP thing they're doing, isn't it?
Yeah, some sort of medieval recreation is mixed with Dungeons and Dragons, I imagine.
Yeah, so um, her name is probably Jen, but they're calling her Jen Elf. Anyway, we discover that she's on the outs of the group. And um, the vampires watching this decide that these virgins will taste either mean or sad. And because of that, they're not worth the trouble, so they decide to leave. But not before Jen Elf's plight strikes a chord with Nadia. And um, it's, it's implied, I guess, that she's decided that she's going to turn her into a vampire, empowering her basically. Uh, she's gonna become Jen Vampire Elf. But it doesn't happen here. It doesn't happen here, I should say that. So we go to the credits and this is a very groovy track, Jeff. This is uh, American folk singer songwriter Norma Taniga's song You're Dead from 1966.
Oh, really? Way back in the 60s, I didn't know that. Oh.
Yeah, so not something that was written for the show, but works really well.
Yeah.
And we return from the credits with a brief recap of previous events. Basically, what happened in episode one was that the Baron, who is a ancient, very powerful vampire, has arrived to visit Stanton Island. And um, he's there to see how the three of them have gotten on with the charge that he gave them several hundred years ago. That they should subjugate the whole of the new world, i.e. North America. Now, this, this is an interesting thing that's unique to vampires, I think, that the older you are, the more powerful you are. Is that your understanding of things?
Uh, I wouldn't say that's not right. Okay, hang on, let me rephrase that. That sounds right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
But like the, sorry, I was just gonna say, you know, props to the um, the makeup bods. Because this looks, I don't know if these people had previously worked on Lord of the Rings or something, but the, the makeup on that vampire, the full body, it's just amazing, isn't it?
The Baron, yeah.
My word. I mean, uh, it's, it's good stuff. He's genuinely scary.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, so he's um, yeah, he's there to see how they're getting on. Of course, being the most ineffectual vampires ever, they've done nothing, um, which is a bit of a concern frankly. They're a bit foggy on it and perhaps their memories are like ours because, you know, if they received the instructions 300 years ago, they could remember that far back. Uh, so they decide that they're going to have a secret meeting in the fancy room to discuss how they could finally progress the Baron's plan and save themselves from imminent doom, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Now Colin has been eavesdropping behind the curtain in the fancy room. And he suggests that they talk to the local leaders and they say, "Yeah, yeah, that, that is a good idea." And he offers to help them and they accept gratefully, uh, his off, this offer of help from him. So this um, this involves a bus ride. They're going to this city council meeting, which is our equivalent of a local government town planning committee. Um, this might be part of the reason why I love this episode so much, because I'm a, I work in town planning and local government. Uh, and this, this committee meeting is described by Colin as a smorgasbord of banality and despair.
I appreciated that line.
Um, he seems, he seems to be irregular at this meeting. And uh, they've only been there for a short time when he is called forward for what he describes um, to the others as a quick mega feed. I guess we would call it, call it a deputation. Um, so he's arranged ahead of time to speak on some kind of issue that's on the agenda. Um, so he, he rocks up to the front, uh, in front of the, the members. And he takes his good time getting the microphone sorted out and he's kind of bending it all over the place and making the noise go all shrill and all this sort of stuff. And then he gets his voluminous notes out and starts sorting those and at last he launches into this really drawn out monologue, which is.
He goes, ordinances, zoning ordinances, I have some thoughts. Now, what is an ordinance?
I have some thoughts.
The dictionary definition of an ordinance is?
Yep, his stack of notes is about two inches thick.
Ah, my goodness.
And this is intercut with clips of the others listing the changes which they're gonna make to, I guess, the town planning rules when they're finally in charge of the area, um, which I'll talk about later. Colin finishes, having no doubt used the full amount of time available. So if, if you're allowed to speak to the matter for 20 minutes, he's spoken for 19 minutes and 59 seconds.
Oh, absolutely.
And everyone is just looking completely exhausted and gutted by the end of this. Um, then Nandor gets called up to speak and he demands that the council members subjugate themselves to him.
Yeah.
Um, he's at the end of this demand, he's thanked for his input and told by the chair lady or the chairperson that the appropriate forum to discuss his request will be coming up in a couple of months. It's a bit, bit like um.
And in the meantime, feel free to use our website, have you?
You'll find lots of useful information in the meantime on the website.
And he's just threatened to kill them all, more or less, unless they comply.
Yes, but he does, he does uh, offer mercy if they're quickly, if they quickly subjugate themselves. So, you know, what more can you do?
Nandor was all like, "Well, yes, yes, I would like to return in two months. Okay, fantastic. I'll do that. Fantastic. Thank you."
Yeah.
Okay, what?
I've got more to say about this later.
Yeah, same.
So um, it doesn't go well, in short. And Laslo impatiently suggests taking matters into their own hands. Uh, so his idea is that they should ally themselves with Miss Lazaro, who is the chair lady or the chairperson that I was talking about earlier, and offer to destroy her enemies. So the vampires separate at this point and Nadia has gone off to find Jen Elf. So Laslo arrives at Miss Lazaro's house to put the smooths, smooth mo-
You've just invented a brilliant new phrase, the smooths.
Smooths. Bring the smooths on there. And to offer.
The smooths, you mean? Sorry.
Smoothing on her. And offers to help remove her enemies. Uh, at which point she, she mentions that the local raccoon population is completely out of control. And um, the conversation continues a bit, um, but she is thrown by some of these things that he's saying which are a bit weird. And suggests that he makes contact with her during office hours. You know, if he just calls up, she'll book a time to see him or have someone help, help him out to deal with his query or whatever. She's basically trying to get rid of him. Now, Nandor goes to Doug Peterson and Doug is Miss Lazaro's rival for power. Uh, so he, his plan is to use Doug for their nefarious purposes. So he hypnotizes Doug and tells Doug that he will receive instructions later tonight.
Yep.
In the meantime, Nadia has found Jen, who turns out to be a completely passive and clueless person. Would you say that's a, an accurate description?
Yes, she's naive and responds to the slightest bit of attention given to her.
Yes, yes. And Jen mistakes um, Nadia's interest in her as a sexual overture of some sort. And thinking that she wants to kiss her neck, instead she gets bit Jeff.
Oh yeah, quite viciously.
Yes, it's a, is a bit vicious, as you'd expect. Uh, now Laslo has gone to sort out these raccoons for his ally. Uh, but he gets bitten, is quite funny. Then later that evening, Nandor calls out through the ether to Doug Peterson, um, after forgetting his name and gives him some instructions. But we don't find out at this point what the instructions are. Then we cut back to Jen, uh, drinking from a bottle which Nadia has offered her. And she's told, like Nadia says, uh, "Now I want you to drink this, this is my blood." And Jen's like, "Oh, ha, ha, ha." You know, she thinks it's some kind of spirit, like vodka or something like that. She thinks he's kind of, she's being joshed or something like that, but she's not Jeff.
No.
And Nadia disappears all of a sudden. So that's, that's the events of the night. And then the next morning, Miss Lazaro steps out onto her porch to collect her newspaper and she finds a massive stack of dead raccoons.
So you've got this.
On the porch. It's like, you know, where the cat, the cat brings in the bird or whatever, it's, it's hunted down and it brings back to, to make you proud of it.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. It's about two foot high.
Oh yeah, it's like the entire raccoon population of Staten Island's being collected and dumped there.
Well done, Laslo.
Yeah, 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 yeah. You're thorough, very thorough. Um, then we go to a meeting of the council where they are discussing this stack of dead raccoons. And um, the vampires are in the audience. They've come back to find out what the next, next thing's gonna be. And Miss Lazaro is thinking or sharing her thoughts that this is some kind of a threat to her or to the council, the council people.
Yeah.
Which seems to be confirmed when Doug Peterson, uh, who is now Nandor's thrall, goes on a Titanic threatening rant against her. And he says he's gonna rip her head from her body and hang her entrails from the street light on such and such a street.
Yeah.
Uh, for which he gets ruled out of order and tackled by a security guard. So yeah, it has become apparent that their plan has completely failed. And while Nadia's complaint.
In fact, uh, uh, both plans have completely failed.
Both plans have completely failed. And Nadia's having a bit of a whinge about this and Nandor says, "Well, you know, where are you, where were you when we were planning all the, you know, when we were getting all this organised?" And she lets drop that she was making a new vampire when the boys came up with this failed plan. And Guilemo, who's sitting next to them, he kind of twigs to that and gets a bit upset because he's been waiting to be made into a vampire for 10 years.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we close with Jen, uh, she's in her college dorm, I guess this is. Does that, does that sound right?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's, she says she's fighting off a very intense flu, but it's obvious that she's begun her transformation into a vampire.
Yes, and we get some lovely projectile vomiting.
Yes, there is a bit of that. So any thoughts before we, was there anything I didn't cover in that?
No.
Alright, shall we talk about some stuff?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think the first thing is gonna be a bit, you've probably got some arguments against this. I kind of well, maybe you should say what you think about the, um, listeners, we have talked about this one a fair bit uh, previously, so I know what Jeff's thoughts are on uh, use of the, the mockumentary uh, format at this point. What do you, have you got any comments on that Jeff?
Oh yeah, well, initially, when it first came out, so we wouldn't have discussed this in months and months and months and months and months, but when it first came out and we were talking about it, I was just telling you how tired I was of quote unquote banter and awkwardness comedy, which is essentially what this is. It does follow the Office type of format. And it's been, you know, The Office has been around for 20 years. And even this sort of source material for this, if it was a movie that came out six years ago, the basic ideas of the thing were probably written about eight to 10 years ago. And uh, the whole impression I had of What We Do in the Shadows in this new series was that instead of being ahead of its time, it's way behind its time. Its time was about a decade ago. And if it was gonna be fresh and cool and new and groovy and entertaining, ideally it wanted to come out in the mid 2000s. Um, I think I, I'd binge watched a lot of it though, if you know what I mean. And I just thought, well, look, I can't believe in 2019, they're bringing stuff like this out, especially something that they've already done in movie format. And expecting it to be entertaining. You know, it's so full of what was fresh and cool and, and is, is now sort of, it's all cliched. But um, I must have been in a bad mood. I mean, obviously I think my point stands, but uh, I think I mustn't have been in the right frame of mind when I binge watched it last year in 2019.
Are you saying that nothing using the mockumentary format is up to scratch anymore, that whole, we should just let that?
No, I don't thi- I, I think it's still possible to do it well, but what I mean is, is it, it came onto the scene in a very good way and now it's spawned a, a ton of imitators. And then we've been fed so much imitation of this, people using this format and at times doing it very poorly, that even when a good one comes along now, you're so bored of the format. All the, the lesser lights and imitators have sort of spoiled it for you by the time you get to that. And it's a bit of oversaturation, I think.
Yeah. I don't think we even, at this point, we've watched so many of them, I don't think we even realise that what we're watching is a mockumentary anymore.
Yeah, we're used to people talking to camera.
Unless there's a specific reference to the film crew or something like that, which rarely happens. I don't think it even, we even really think about it too much, to be honest.
Yeah. And then there has to be a spoken one at that because a couple of times in this episode, so after um, Nandor hypnotises Doug Peterson and he thought, "Well geez, that was easy." And he turns around to the camera and raises his eyebrows in a, "Well, that was cool" sort of way. And also um, Nadia looked at the camera when she was chomping down on Jen Elf.
Yep.
And uh, stuff like that. But even then, with those two, I didn't, it didn't break the whole thing for me going, "Oh yes, there's a cameraman filming all this" and that's a bit weird and how can these people not know they're being filmed?
This is one of the things I, I like about this is the inherent comedy value in the fact that a film crew would follow vampires around. Watching them offing people and turning them into vampires and all the other shenanigans they get up to. You know, in what kind of reality would that actually happen?
Oh, I don't know, but it is hilarious when, in a future episode, when the Baron starts losing it and just killing people willy nilly, that they do refer to the camera crew being there. And it's hilarious because you have forgotten.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, I think we've done that. Done that.
Yeah. Oh, look, so here's what I'd say about that, because this was in my notes anyway. But look, I think this is probably a good episode though, because it's written by Paul Sims, the producer. Uh, whereas some of the other episodes in this series, when I was feeling a bit negative about it, might have been weaker episodes written by some lower down the totem pole writers. Because this sort of comedy, it requires an extremely delicate balance. You know, when you're watching something that's flowing well and well observed and well put together. And if it's done by someone not as deft with it, it can be ham-fisted and amateur sort of, and it's, it just all falls flat. And the difference between that failure and that success is so slight. That in the hands of a bad writer, it's not as good. And I think I may have just come off some episodes that weren't written with the, the skills of your Paul Sims.
So they get a bit too clever for themselves sometimes.
I mean, it, it's like you're ticking the boxes of what awkward banter comedy is supposed to be. But um, that's not the case for this episode. Anyway, I'll let you, uh, let you launch into some of your stuff.
So some of the other bigger picture kind of things, I like that these guys are completely ineffectual. So they've been here for several hundred years and what have they done? Well, they've done nothing.
Yeah.
They're handed these virgins on a golden platter and they look at them and go, "Oh no, that one's gonna taste bad. I can't be bothered anymore." It's gonna leave a bad taste in my mouth.
They're, they are the definition of complacent.
Yeah, yeah. Guilemo's been asking for 10 years to be made into a vampire and Nandor can't be, uh, well, I don't know if he can't be bothered, but he doesn't get around to it. So they're not, not in a hurry to push the agenda forward, are they?
No. I mean, why would he bother to elevate Guillermo to the, more or less the same level as him?
Then he's left to, you'll have to find someone else to do all the hard work for him.
Exactly, exactly.
And uh, they'll be sharing the house with another, another rotten vampire.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think one of the other funny, really funny things is that they're so out of step with the modern world. Like they've been shut away in this house essentially for 300 years or something, uh, rarely making it out. So there's things like um, when Laslo is um, trying to suck up to Miss Lazaro, he's saying that, you know, things like, you know, "You're a credit to the women's suffragette movement", things like this.
And very easy on the eye.
And very easy on the eye. Uh, you can imagine that in Matt Berry's tones. Yeah, so just things like that, like they're constantly coming out of, with things that.
He's a hundred years out of date.
Yeah, his, his um, chat up lines are a hundred years out of date. So I think, yeah, that's all really funny. I think the casting in this show is just golden. And they've got, they've done a really good job, job of bringing people over from the UK and mixing that with people from the US. And of course, we've got New Zealand influence in it as well. So it's, it's really come together well from all that side of things. Uh, what do you think about the, who, who's your favourite vampire? Have you got one?
Well, look, I'll answer that in a minute, but it's like you're reading my notes. Well, look, I'll answer that in a minute, but it's like you're reading my notes here, dude. Yeah, so great casting. Um, I'll talk more about that later, but yeah, I'm. You'd think I would say Laslow, but I'm gonna pick Najah. I mean, they're all bloody good.
Yeah.
So it's, it's difficult to say.
Oh, Nandor is my favourite.
Yeah. Uh, I can't get my head around Nandor because I can't decide if he's this conquering action man who made the Euphrates run red with blood twice. Or whether he's a camp moron who can't, can't do anything. You know what I mean?
Well, you know, he's, he's, he's lost his mojo sometime in the last fifteen hundred years, that's all.
Oh, he definitely has.
He's, he's hardly relentless.
Uh.
Gives this address to the council. He's told to come back in a couple of months and check the website and he goes, oh, okay, thanks.
He's relenting all the time.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Uh, he's classic. The um, his accent is just absolutely hilarious. And the guy, the guy who plays him is just this, he seems to be a pretty big guy. Like, he'd be physically intimidating.
Oh yeah, he's an imposing dude.
Even Laslow doesn't want to be caught out. He says to the film crew, for, for F's sake, don't show this to, don't let Nandor see this.
And he hadn't even, he hadn't even trash talked Nandor all that much. He was being quite complimentary. Uh, yeah, maybe we'll put in a clip of that.
How best to describe Nandor? I would say that he's blessedly unburdened with the complications of a university education, but give him an axe and he's second to none, though you wouldn't want him as your barrister. Don't let him see this. Um, all right, I've got some gags now. Have you got anything else before we, any other big picture kind of things before we get onto that?
Yeah, I totally have. I'm gonna keep crapping on about the cast.
Oh, go on.
Um, so obviously, look, when you've got Matt Berry in your sitcom, that can cover a lot of sins. Right? So you can just give him a line which is pure garbage and he's gonna make that line seem amazing, just in his delivery. So having him there can cover a lot of sins. Now, don't mistake that as me saying there's a lot of sins here to be covered. I'm just making that observation. So he's magnetic and so when he's on the screen, uh, it's all good. So you always want more Matt Berry on this, on the screen, but then you don't wanna entirely devote the screen to him, cause we saw what happened in the Year of the Rabbit.
Oh, the Year of the Rabbit was a bit of a, bit of a tragedy. Hmm.
But they also got it right, as you say, with Nandor and Najah. Um, they're spot on. And the dude playing Colin is bang on as well. His, the body language and the facial expressions. And he does a lot of off speaking acting, if you know what I mean. Oh, I haven't got the phrase for it, but yeah. And I, I wrote down Josh Gad is good. Now, this is Guillermo.
Yes.
And it's a dude called Harvey Guillen or something like that. And I could have sworn, oh, this whole time I've thought it was Josh Gad. And I just thought, oh, I'm, I'm doing him a disservice. So my apologies, my apologies to Harvey. Yeah, no, it's a, it is superbly well cast, this show. And um, and what the, what I like about the script. And maybe it doesn't do this in every episode. I always like it when you can just bung on a mid-series episode of a sitcom. And they still throw in everything you need to know about the characters if you've never seen it before.
Hmm.
And that's what's done here. So they, they set up the situation pretty quickly as well.
Yeah.
With a recap of the Baron thing. But if you'd never seen this show and you came in this early. You'd still learn everything you need to know about Laslow and Nandor and Najah as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I've got some, some notes about this specific, what I like about this specific episode, but I've got some gags before that.
Okay.
So they're, the three vampires are watching the Larpas do their thing. And Nandor, like Guillermo, Guillermo says something. And Nandor, shush, he says, shush, Guillermo, you'll spook the virgins, your accent. This is while the three of them are levitating outside a first floor window. And he's speaking in some kind of ancient South Iranian accent or something like that.
Yes.
I don't think, I don't think the first thing they're gonna notice is the, the voice that's coming from the ground. Twenty feet away. It'll be you guys floating outside the window.
Exactly.
Yes. I like the scene where they're complaining that the Baron's familiar, which is this old lady. Is creepy and how she appears from out of nowhere next to them and this sort of thing.
Yeah.
I was thinking to myself, you're complaining that she's creepy? Three of you are vampires and one of you is a vampire's familiar who does all this kind of crazy stuff. I don't know.
Yeah, they're scared of the human.
Yeah, scared of the human. When they're talking about how the, their mission was to take over the whole of North America. Laslow says, what would, what would anyone want with Canada? And I think it's Nandor, he says, apparently there's a very active trade in beaver pelts.
Yep.
And Laslow goes, oh. In the same conversation, Nadia says about the Baron, what a big bloody cheeky jerk. But she does it.
Yeah.
So funny in his accent.
It's a brilliant mix of, you know, Englishisms and Americanisms.
Yeah, and all the others are shushing there, trying to get it to settle down. Very funny. Um, I like the scene when they're on the way to the council meeting. And the three vampires have decided that they're gonna turn into bats and they're riding on top of the bus in order to avoid Colin's monologue. And I don't know if you noticed, but they passed an eatery that was called the Staten Rye Land. Rye Land. I was saying before how during Colin's presentation to the council. The three vampires are giving their own list of ideas or demands of what they're gonna do when they're in charge, right?
Oh yeah, I like this.
One of them is a huge opaque dome over the entire city to block out sunlight. Very handy for a vampire. Uh, no noise during daylight hours.
Yep.
No crucifixes in churches. Uh, ban on turtlenecks.
I don't know why, but there you go.
Well, because, and this is where I need to make an apology. A turtleneck is a, covers someone's neck, doesn't it?
I understand now. I wondered why he wanted them banned. It all makes sense now. Thank you.
Brilliant, it's a brilliant gag.
Yeah.
But I realised that, um, in last Fortnite's episode, when we were talking about, is it Harvey's getup?
Oh, Howard, yeah.
When he's a jazz, a jazz dude.
Yep.
I, I said he was wearing a polo shirt, he was wearing a turtleneck.
Oh, that's okay.
Ugh, all right. And the, the final one that I wrote down, the final demand was free but compulsory harpsichord concerts every day of the week.
Dear, oh dear. Yeah, uh, and, and he wants them performed by um, Thomas Morley.
Nice. Yeah, I could see that.
I was expecting riotous laughter. Um, look, it's amazing when you're talking about this list of demands. In my notes, I've got the only one left that you didn't mention. It's like, I, I didn't write down any of those as one of my favourite gangs. But I, I did have.
Stood at you then.
When Najah says she wants a vampire-only TV channel with her favourite show, Priests Falling Over.
Yeah, I don't, explain that one to me. Obviously you got it and I didn't get it.
She's obviously just got a thing against Reliving, but what makes me laugh is these people want all these things that are practical for a vampire. I.e. the dome, no turtlenecks, burn all crucifixes. And all she wants is a bloody TV show. A whole channel devoted to vampires with her favourite show, Priests Falling Over. And of course, that instantly makes me think of Father Ted. So I'm just thinking, that's what she wants. She just wants a channel with Father Ted on it all the time.
Oh, because Father Ted falls over?
Yeah.
Very good, very good.
But yeah, I mean, we, we both agree that the list of demands scenes are classic, but just we pick different gags.
Oh, that, that's good. Uh, I don't know if you noticed Colin's face while he's feeding at the back of this, the council meeting.
Oh, when Doug, Doug Peterson's going off his nana saying, our new masters are going to kill you all, blah, 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 blah.
Well, even while Nandor was speaking.
Yeah.
He's just got his mouth open as if he's kind of drinking in the.
The shock, the surprise.
Dread or, or whatever's going on. He's got this look of pure ecstasy on his face. Now, poor Nandor having to follow Colin's speech. I mean, you look at the people, you look at the people after Colin's finished and they're all half asleep. More than half asleep, they're half dead.
Yep, absolutely.
Gotta try and impose his will on them.
It's amazing because I've been um, just thinking about this. Is uh, like, I love every scene that happens in the council chambers. But as, I'm just imagining, you know, the extras in the chamber are all having to fall asleep or look incredibly bored or look incredibly frustrated. And they're all hating Colin. And I'm just imagining the casting person ringing them up and goes, okay, yes, look, we, we can confirm you've got this role in this vampire comedy we're gonna film, okay? And they're thinking, awesome. And they go, what we want you to do is dress in a suit and sit in this chair while Colin craps on about zoning ordinances. And these poor extras are thinking, yes, I'm gonna be in this vampire comedy.
I probably thought they were gonna get chased, chased down a dark alley or something like that.
Yeah, exactly. But no, they've gotta sit there being bored in a council meeting. It's classic. Oh, man.
Um, then um, Laslov, after the meeting, is asking where Miss Lozaro's weak spot is. And Colin says, oh, you mean her Achilles' heel? And Laslov goes, oh, it's her foot, is it?
Yeah, and then later on he asks her about her, he's glad her foot injury is healing up. And she's going, what?
Yeah, he tries, first he compliment, compliments her in a chatty up kind of way and then he says, oh, I'm glad to see your foot's looking better.
Yeah, oh man.
She's just going, what? What's going on?
Yeah.
Nadia, when she's um, reflecting back on her, um, the similarities that she sees between herself and Janelle. She's saying um, that she was so poor when she was young that the family had to burn a donkey dung. And then when they ran out of donkey dung, they had to, had to burn the donkey.
I've got that on my list as well.
And we were so poor that we used to use donkey dung for fuel. And when the donkey dung ran out, we would have to burn the donkey. So yes, I don't know what it feels like to be mocked and teased and to cry myself to sleep at night by the light of a burning donkey.
Uh, but even better, then like they intercut these to camera pieces with like what appear to be ancient sketches out of thousand-year-old texts. And you've got this ancient sketch of a gypsy family camped around this burning donkey. And it's just classic.
It's not just that, that someone's, they've taken the time to have someone draw these sketches.
I would have taken hours.
But within the likeness of our vampires.
Absolutely, it's amazing. It's attention to detail.
Yep. Then back to the scene with Laslov and the, is it, is it Laslow or Laslov? What's going on here?
Well, you're having a, you're having a shocker with the pronunciations this episode did.
It's not the, not the worst I've ever done, but it's not. It's not a good one, that's for sure.
Uh, right, let me, let me.
Laslow. Back to the scene with Laslow on the porch of Miss Lozaro's house. She's brought her, she's babysitting her infant grandchild, granddaughter. And he says, oh, what a, what a lovely little nibble she would be.
Oh man, yeah. Totally. It, that's, that's more or less his opening statement and that would put you right off.
She's just, what?
Yeah.
Really, that's why, that's the end of my list. What have you got?
Oh, look, yeah, I've got plenty. Uh, speaking of Laslow, and it is Laslow, not Laslov. So two out, you, you've got two out of our three cast names wrong. Um, but the mound of dead raccoons on her porch, that's just one of the most hilarious things I've ever seen. And then in real life, I'm just imagining this actress, her name's Marceline Hugo, or Hugo. And she plays councilwoman Lozaro. I'm just imagining this lady having to deal with Matt Berry's craziness. They probably had to improvise. You know, twenty takes of this and she's probably just going, what? And I'm just, I'd love to have been a fly on the wall when they filmed those. And I'm, I'm betting they're probably best mates now. But jeez, and she's got an impressive resume herself when it comes to sitcoms and stuff, it turns out. So, yeah, that, that's pretty good.
At the end of that, at the end of that scene, he does the whole, you're not gonna remember this, you're not gonna remember this conversation. And then he does it to the baby as well. And then he plays them a kiss, walks off.
Yeah, it's brilliant. Oh, man.
Uh, carry on.
We've got Colin, right? So when they're on the bus, um, and I'll bring that up in a minute as well. But Colin just says, look, everyone focuses on the day part of being a day walker, not the walking. And then he starts talking about the walking. He just, that summed Colin up right there.
Yeah.
He takes the most interesting part about himself and just completely negates it and talks about the most boring part of himself.
Yeah, yeah, it's all part of his cunning plan.
Yeah, yeah. I think, you know, what this show tries to do, and again, a lot of other shows try to do it as well. But I think just the unique situation of this show helps, is they're doing this obvious contrast of the exotic and the large and, and action, which is essentially vampires conquering America. And they're contrasting that against the mundane and the everyday, like, you know, these boring council talk fests that are just mired in bureaucracy and red tape. And so that's why all the council chambers stuff is so good, cause they're, you know, they're dressed ridiculously. And it's just when you're contrasting the big with the small. So you get this a couple of times. It's like, what are we gonna do about this thousands of year old vampire who's gonna slaughter us all unless we take over the new world? And then they fall into this conversation about, look, why is this meeting in the fancy room? Don't we normally have our meetings in the, the library? So what you do is you take these huge stakes moments and you boil them down to these completely. I'm not phrasing this very well, Steve, but that's what they're doing. And the similar thing with the bus. So it, we've ended this last scene where they've decided they're going to go over and take over North America. And you've got Nandor, gets to his feet and shouts, let our domination begin this very night. And you cut to them straight away on the bus.
On the bus.
Which Collins made them take just so he can talk about buses.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
And so that's, that's where they're mining all the comedy, I suppose.
Did you have any other gags?
I do. Uh, sorry, I've got too many here, but what I'm loving as well is the microphone comedy. Now, there's two lots. First, you've got, uh, as you pointed out, Colin's microphone stuff. Firstly, makes them hold on. And then he walks up to the microphone and then he adjusts the goose neck on it, which goes and he's doing all this terrible microphone stuff. That was gold. And then a bit later on. Of course, you get Nandor coming up to speak to the council people and he puts his gob right up on the microphone and it's super distorted. And he's going, greetings mortals, he says. Yeah. And the other thing while with Nanda, Nandor up at the, at the podium with his microphone. Is when they got up to go there, Guillermo, the familiar is, you know, gets up first to prepare the way for Nandor. And he's just so proud to be there with his master and he's smiling his head off.
Yeah.
And then he stands to one side and Nandor delivers the speech. And Guillermo is just beaming at him. Thinking, yes, look at my master in action. He's gonna crush these people. He's gonna completely take over. And even when Nandor totally fails, Guillermo's just there, smiling at him and saying, yes, yes, master, we'll get this website happening on the computer and blah. Oh, man.
Exactly.
The non-dialogue acting by this cast is just brilliant.
Yep.
Uh, that's all I've got as far as gags go and all that sort of bit. In fact, that's all I've got as far as everything goes.
Well, just um, finish up with the, the things specific to this episode, which I really liked, which you've already picked up on, I think. It was the first one was that it's Colin-heavy, uh, cause I love that character and he, he kind of leads the way with his suggestion that the others take him up on.
Yep.
So he's in his element. And just the whole idea that they're gonna conquer Staten Island by taking over local government.
Yeah.
Is hilarious.
Absolutely.
And of course, they advance their cause, um, or the Baron's cause in no way at all. So it's just upping the stakes in the, in the bigger picture. Also like the start of the Gen Vampire storyline, cause that's, that's pretty interesting. There's things specific about this episode that I really liked.
Oh, cool.
Yes, so um, what do you think?
This episode is a good episode. And yeah, I think you've picked a very good one by Paul Sims here. And as I was saying, uh, my negative comments about the series way back when was when I think I must have come off some much weaker episodes where the writer and or the actor or whoever, or the director perhaps, wasn't getting it right. But in this episode, people are getting it right. So there you go. This deserves to go into the Hall of Fame.
Oh, cool. Uh, so I timed it right, huh?
Yeah.
Apologies for mangling half the names of the, the characters.
And the setting?
And probably the cast members as well and the setting, so. Yes, um, like I said, not the worst of, not the worst I've ever done. Yes, but anyway, thanks for joining us listeners, uh, for that, uh, look at vampire life. And uh, Jeff, do you remember what we're doing next month?
May, we are scheduled, Stevo, to do the Hall of Shame. Dun dun dun. So that would involve what for the listeners' benefit?
Uh, okay, so the Hall of Shame is us nominating, each nominating. Uh, particularly egregious. Uh particularly egregious sitcom episode. So it's gonna be a, a poor episode of what is regarded as a good sitcom generally.
Oh blimey.
Um how easy does that sound?
It doesn't sound easy.
Well, we'll find out next uh, next month.
Okay, we'll give it a bash.
Alright, well, thanks for joining us and we'll catch you in a couple of weeks, listeners.
Alright, ta ta and take care, everybody.
See ya.
Bye.
Join us next time on Sitcom Showdown when we'll be putting another five-star episode under the microscope. And in the meantime, you can contact us with feedback on Facebook, Twitter at Sitcom Showdown, or by email. Sitcomshowdown@gmail.com.